Welcome everyone to the Hyde Park School Board. At this time, can we all stand please for the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay, we have a couple agenda modifications. Okay, we're pulling item 11.8 and we added item 11.9. And can I have a motion to adopt, wait, a motion to adopt the, can I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
Is this where I'm?
Yet.
Yeah, so move.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Discussion now, 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 okay.
Okay. Trying to make sure I do this right. I move to remove policy 1222 Booster Clubs from item 10.9, second reading and adoption of policies for further discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor? Opposed? Amendment passed, can I have, is there any more discussion on the agenda? All those in favor? Opposed, agenda passed.
You've done good.
Okay, upcoming events.
Thank you.
There will be no school on November 12th as we celebrate Veterans Day. On November 14th was the DLT meeting at 6:30 at the district office. On November 19th, we have an early release for parent teacher conferences, all elementaries. On Tuesday, November 20th, we'll have early release for all schools for parent teacher conferences. On November 21st through November 23rd, we'll have our Thanksgiving holiday recess. And on Thursday, November 29th, will be the next Board of Education meeting. Okay, is there any pride?
Oh, yeah.
You want to talk about the play?
So, for sports, I'll start with sports. For cross-country boys, they won Mahals for the fourth consecutive year. They came third place in sectionals and the Mahal champion was Paul Sanford from FDR for the boys. And for the girls, they also won Mahals. They came in fifth in sectionals and the Mahal champion was Sarah Trainer from FDR. She's the first female FDR cross-country runner to win sectional, so she also won sectionals. And she's competing in the state championships in Long Island on the 10th. Thursday, at the sectionals prelims meet for swimming, for girl swimming, Katherine Graham placed first in the 100 meter breaststroke with a state cut time of 105.36 and she came in second in the 200 IM. The relay teams, the 200 medley relay made top 16 with Maya Simerelli, Cassie Jarvis, Colleen Biscop, and Natalie Calazo. 200 freestyle relay, they also came in top 16. Mackenzie Hannon, Morgan Hannon, Colleen Biscop, and Ainsley Farrell. And the 400 freestyle relay, they came in 10th. Natalie Calazo, Mackenzie Hannon, Morgan Hannon, and Katherine Graham. Visitors from Spackenkill, Brewster, Monticello, and Hudson were at the school the other day. I was talking with Mr. Partey today and he said that with the building itself, the teaching and the students, they were really, really impressed with what they saw. And we were talking about that for a little bit. And then we got to test scores and graduation rates and he was telling me how they've rose over the past four years and it's just something to be proud about. The fall drama was last week. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to go, but I had a few friends that went. They said it was really, really, really great performance put on by the drama club. Sources of strength went on a retreat last Friday to Regional Taconic Environment Headquarters. This was about 90-plus students learning about being leaders and active participants in their community. This time, the focus was on doing exercises so the newest members understand what sources of strength is built on. And no other school is doing this besides FDR, so that's, that's pretty cool. The craft fair is coming up on December 1st. It's, it's pretty fun, it's, a lot of people are involved in that. Parent teacher conferences are on the 15th and 20th. And today, FDR, in partnership with Dutchess County Chamber of Commerce, hosted the FDR Career and Job Fair in our gym. This was a successful event last year, so even more businesses participated to take applications and discuss internships and what they need from our students to be able to employ them. There were, there were a big variety of jobs I, I went today and there were jobs from police to clowns, so it was very, very interesting. And a lot of people went too, a lot of students went. And Mrs. Billings and Ms. Hurley are in the lobby each morning this week. They're asking people to stop and share what they are thankful for on a leaf. And the leaves are added to a tree in the lobby to show FDR people are thankful for. And that's pretty much it.
I'd like to comment on the career fair. I was impressed with the students and how well they, I'm not saying behave, but how they were engaged in the various booths and showed great interest in the, I went around to each booth, I thought the presenters there were really engaging themselves and I thought this is a terrific program. This is really a good program.
Yeah, it wasn't just kids walking around just to get out of class, they were talking to the people who were there, getting information, stuff like that.
And I want to thank the teachers because I know that they actually, ahead of time, really prepared students and made sure that they were aware this was happening and a lot of students were told they could dress up and as if it was, well, it could be a real interview.
I'd also like to mention the middle school Havilin's Community Night, which was another success. It's always interesting to see what's going on in a school and I also got to learn about different facilities that are within Hudson Valley availability, like Lexington, which I had never heard of before, which is a social group. And there was a bunch of social services, Dutchess County Social Services was there. I hope everybody got to talk to them because they were really interesting. And there was also students and teachers there that were doing another nice thing on Abbott was also.
Yeah.
So it was a very nice night and if you went hungry, they even fed you, so.
I'd like to just comment on, on the play. Of course, I was there. Of course, I thought it was unbelievably fabulous. I just, I'm always in awe of all the talent we have in our, in our district. But I do want to put a plug for the spring because big things are coming and I don't know if I'm allowed to say what they're doing. I don't know if it's public yet for the spring musical, but look for it, save the date, it's going to be spectacular.
You're going to leave a thing?
I am, I am. I don't know what I'm allowed to say, so I don't want to.
You know what date?
No, I don't know, it's usually the second, the second weekend in March or something like that.
It's on the district calendar, the date, not the title.
It's on the district calendar, the date, yes, but it's going to be good, so.
Any more pride? Okay, on to superintendent's report.
Yeah, just two things. One, in honor of Veterans Day, I would like to thank all of the veterans in our community, in our school district, at the board table. So, thank you for your service and certainly we have several employees who, who have provided service. Also, the Town of Hyde Park, and by the way, Aileen Rohr and Sue Serena were here today for the career, career fair. But we did get an invitation from the Town of Hyde Park on November 13th. I don't know if Jeff or Carl, will you be able to go? Great. And Elliot Sheldon, I think, will go. Aileen really encouraged us to be at the table as it affects, you know, right in front of our, our buildings. But that is an information session on the next steps for the public sewer system, so I was happy she gave us the heads up about the meeting and a very personal invite. And I visit the student government each year I got to attend. I actually got to see Patrick give his board report to the student government officers, so that was great. I, I always welcome the opportunity to meet the student leaders of our district and just be able to thank them and talk about service leadership. Next week, I'll be going to the Havilin Middle School Student Government.
Are you going to do this air quality?
Oh, yes, is that the next thing up?
Yep.
Okay. If we had moved on. Attached for the board is the update when we were experiencing the mold at North Park. We had all agreed to put together a long-term plan for North Park Elementary, knowing that it is susceptible. And attached is the full report with all of the benchmarks, moving forward timelines, monthly checks, proactive measures, monitoring the dehumidification process. I'm looking for my notes, I don't need them. That is in front of you and also that is a public document. I also wanted to touch on, in the tri-state area, there has been much conversation about the extreme weather conditions and the impact it had on school buildings throughout the tri-state area. Several organizations are putting some effort into education and monitoring. There's actually mold symposiums being held. For our district part, Elliot Sheldon will be trained as a certified mold inspector in December. It's a four-day training, he will be certified. We will, he will be conducting walkthroughs on a monthly basis and on an as-needed basis in all of our schools. Additionally, we have committed to annual training for our facilities and custodial workers in better cleaning methods, preventative methods, as well as when they should give somebody the heads up. So, the specific plan attached to the board agenda, as requested, is the very specific outline for North Park Elementary. Large-scale district management is again training one of our own staff as well as in the identification and then also all of our facilities people.
Any questions?
Just one question, when Elliot is trained, will he be given the opportunity of obtaining several of the instruments that the other mold inspectors had and were utilizing to run buildings, to check outs and stuff, or are we going to be?
I can get back to you on that, on what the difference or nuances are between a certified mold assessor and a certified mold, is it, I don't have it in front of me, inspector. So, I can get back to you on that.
Any other questions? Okay, next up, we'll have Ralph R. Smith's presentation from Principal Lawson.
As Melissa's coming up, I'd like to thank the Ralph R. Smith community and staff for coming out.
Yes, thank you.
And for the treats in the back of the room.
All right, hopefully I can get this to work. Now, here we go. Okay, welcome to Ralph R. Smith and I also want to thank faculty and staff for coming out tonight. It's always appreciated since it's a late evening and we all have to be ready for students in the morning. So, our first slide is just our motto, we are all Owls, outstanding, wonderful learners. And we recognize that every day in our building. We talk about it in our morning announcements and quarterly, we have awards assemblies where students are given Owl Star Awards and Bucket Filler Awards. And that ceremony is happening tomorrow, so that's something exciting that's happening. Our mission and vision statements have been created a few years ago. They directly align with the district mission and vision statements and also our profile of a graduate. They were developed collaboratively with our BLT and staff. Our enrollment this year is 386 students and we have it broken down by ethnicity. Something curious, when I was looking at the ethnicity report, I noticed that Hispanic wasn't included there. But when I spoke to the Rick about that, many of our families who identify as Hispanic also identify in another ethnic category, so that is just of interest to note. And there are 64 students who are listed as Hispanic as well. So, our data for our New York State tests is here and I am pleased to say that we saw some nice growth this year with our, last year with our state tests. Especially in third grade, we saw some really nice improvement there. Third grade jumped from 9% proficient to 33% proficient in ELA. In fourth grade, we went down two points, but over half of our students opted out of the state test. And last year, when I presented to the board, there were some questions around what other data do we look at if we have a lot of opt-outs? And I'm going to share some other data with you this evening so that we can look at, are our fourth graders performing where they should be? In fifth grade, we did see some growth in ELA from 9 to 16%. And when we look at cohort to cohort, fifth graders also made some nice growth. In math, again, third grade saw some very nice growth. They went from 8% to 42% proficient. I think that having our third graders take this test after having the curriculum that we've had in place since they were kindergartners has made a tremendous difference. So, there's continuity in language and approach and process and our students are benefiting from that. So, again, fourth grade went down, but we also had over half of our students opt out. And fifth grade was just about even with our performance in math. Science, we saw some growth as well. Went from 51% to 64% proficient. Again, we did have high opt-outs either in science in fourth grade. Our opt-outs from last year are listed here. In third grade, we saw the lowest opt-outs we've seen in quite a few years. So, that also speaks to the, the growth. We had a lot of participation, therefore we feel like it's an accurate measure in third grade. In fourth grade, 52% opted out in ELA and 54% in math and 38% in science. And that's really high for science. And in fifth grade, 33% for ELA and 28% for math. Our overall opt-out rate was 32%. So, this year, because of the questions that were asked last year, we're, I'm sharing with you our MAPS data. And our MAPS is a computer adaptive assessment that generates what's called a WIT score for each student. And that score reflects their academic skills and knowledge. And when students take the test, they take it in the fall and in the spring and we look for growth. The program generates a projected growth score that is our target for the spring. So, our district contracts with Ed Analytics, which provides a score for us, for our teacher-approved SLOs from New York State. And this year, we were 15 overall. The Haiti score is on the bottom and our scale is 15 to 17 points is effective. So, we scored 15 as a building overall, which is in the effective range. But we do have it broken out by grade level as well. And this is the first time that we've been able to really look at this data by grade level in this format. So, it's really interesting and one of the things that I zeroed on, in on right away is our third grade scores, according to this, are developing even though we saw a tremendous amount of growth in third grade. So, we started to look at that more closely and realized that when we look at the projected WIT score and whether we met that, there's a standard error of plus or minus three points. And when we looked at our third graders in particular, over 90% of our kids met that standard error range, which means that they were within one or two points of meeting their growth score. So, we're looking into this data, we're using MAPS on a regular basis. We're encouraging all of the teachers to do a mid-year MAPS check-in to really take a look at where our students are falling and what we need to focus on moving forward towards the spring assessment. Our improvement initiatives continue. We are no longer a local assistance plan school, which is something to celebrate, but that doesn't mean that the work stops. So, we are using our in-class coaching support from Generation Ready. We have two consultants that work in our building this year and all of that support is directly in classrooms, side-by-side coaching during our ELA block for reading and writing. We continue to target, do targeted PDs before and after school in regards to best practices. I lead some of them and our directors do as well. Most recently, we've been working on taking apart the data from the New York State assessments and identifying specific goals for students who did not meet the Level 3 benchmark. So, we're working on identifying those students and setting targeted goals and progress monitoring them. We continue to study testing as a genre in 3 through 5 because testing language is very different than language that you might see in day-to-day life. So, we really take that apart with our kids so that they understand what they're being asked to do when they are taking their state tests. Technology integration is something that we are really dedicated to. We are so fortunate to have a wonderful library media specialist who pushes into classrooms and supports technology in a wide variety of ways. Anything from inquiry-based learning and research to Makey-Makey and Scratch, which are coding tools. And our classrooms use Chromebooks every day, there's a cart for every grade level and they're used for reading, writing, math, research throughout the day. Our interactive boards are in every classroom and they are used on a continual basis. And there is a general sense of panic when they don't turn on because we rely on them so much. They're interactive, so it's a great way for students to become involved and we're using them for some of our critical thinking skills. And specifically, at our last few superintendents conference days, we've been focusing on some critical thinking strategies such as question formulation techniques, see, think, wonder. And those are things that we're already using in the classrooms. The day after our superintendent's conference day, you could see them embedded. So, there are lots of wonderful things going on with our technology. And we also have the support of the tech integrator from Bosse's, Julianne, who does morning PDs and does a great job with that. Our BLT goals are here. We have a very active BLT and our goals this year are quarterly principal challenges. We had our first one in conjunction with our fall festival and I challenged kids to make catapults. And I had a wide variety of catapults that I created and we practiced shooting them off and talked about the science behind it. And I am very proud to say that we had over 65 catapults come in that families created together because this is really to encourage family engagement in academic areas. And this particular challenge was STEM-related, but challenges each quarter may focus on different areas. So, the kids had a great time. There were several catapults that shot over 65 feet across the entire length of the cafeteria and were only stopped by the windows. So, there was a lot of excitement about that. Took an hour and a half to shoot them all off. So, it was a lot of fun. And the second goal is around exploring and implementing passion projects. So, we want to increase engagement in academic learning and one way to do that is for kids to find what they're passionate about and devote some time to studying that. And the goal is, is that we're going to start with a school-wide project around recycling and you'll see a mosaic there that is created solely from bottle caps. So, we are going to be creating some mosaics to decorate our cafeteria and, you know, explore the passion of recycling as a building. And then kids will be encouraged to identify what their passions are and explore those a little bit during their science and social studies block. And we are very proud of all of our accomplishments in, at Ralph R. Smith. This year, we're focusing particularly on kindness as a theme and we have a next year is a little ad that every teacher got called Be Kind. And tucked inside that book is our kindness pledge, so you can pass that along and look at it. But we're, we're doing activities around kindness every month to keep it a focus. We all know that our world can be a little bit cruel sometimes, so it's important to teach kids to be kind to one another. And it aligns directly with our various bully prevention program that we've had going on for several years. Our PTA is extremely active. We do at least one evening event a month. Some of our highlights are our spring play. That too is really exciting and it gets kids ready for what comes in middle school and high school. And our PTA just did the fall festival and we also have a craft fair coming up after Thanksgiving. And our teachers actually create ornaments to purchase at the event and they're well-sought after and it becomes quite a competition who can create the coolest ornament. Our STEM challenges last year led to more participation in the STEM fair. Last year, in the winter, I went classroom to classroom and challenged each grade level to a STEM competition. There's a picture there of two kids that created a structure to balance a tennis ball on and that was the fourth grade challenge. And then they, we had these challenges out at the STEM fair for families to try out as well. We continue to do our out at the STEM fair for families to try out as well. We continue to do our Student Expo at the end of the year, and that's a way to celebrate all of our learning that's happened this year. I'm hopeful that our passion projects will be on display that evening. But our students select what they're most proud of and put it on display for their families. And it is also a really great, well-attended community event. And it's probably our best-attended event of the year. We do kindergarten story hour over the summer to invite our new families in and get to know them. We had a great turnout this August. We did two different events. And we do, I read a book, we do a craft, and we have a snack together. We're also starting a committee to talk about creating a fitness trail on our property, and that's something that I'm pulling some volunteers together to do. We have a read-aloud day every year to celebrate Dr. Seuss's birthday. And I already mentioned our awards assemblies, which we have one tomorrow. We also work with different agencies in the community. We had our Fire Safety Day with the Roosevelt Fire Department in October, and they come in and do a fantastic job of teaching fire safety to our students. We work directly with Marist reading students, and they come to our building and volunteer and learn from us, and we learn from them as well. Hyde Park Police, we have a really good connection with our SLOs. Obviously, Officer Neil Bella has left, so I'm looking forward to working with our new SRO at Havland. We typically work with the Havland SRO just due to proximity. We always work with IBM during E-Week. We have a very strong foster-grandparents program. We have three incredible foster-grandparents that, two of them come in every day, all day long, and support our youngest students. We have a One Book One School. Greer actually has that book in her hands right now, The Lemonade War. And there's a theme around math this year with this book. And this book is given out to every family to read together, and we do contests in school, and it's a lot of fun. And we have a backpack program that provides meals to 18 families every weekend, and that is solely funded through local donations. And we have volunteers that come every Thursday morning to pack up those bags and get them ready to hand out Friday morning. And I know the families really appreciate that. And that's it. Any questions?
For your BTL, BT, BLT goals, sorry. You're encouraging family engagements. Do you have other things besides your quarterly that you're doing?
So we started small with our quarterly challenges. We also do our Student Expo, and we invite families in for reading events and things like that that are already part of our program at school. So we're just trying to generate more interest in math and science areas, and really getting families engaged in those tasks at home with their kids, and then showing that off at school. So we're starting small with one each quarter.
Yeah, I actually kind of like this. So the next one, if you could invite me, if I'm not working, I'd like to come.
I would love to.
Any other questions? Nope. Thank you, Melissa. Nice presentation.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa.
Yes.
Okay, at this time, can I have a motion for public participation?
Don't move.
So.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. At this time, if anybody would like to address the board, please come to the microphone.
Hi, good evening. I'm Nicole North. I have two questions. Question one is regarding the mold. I have a son at North Park, and I'm glad to see that it's being handled as best as it could. We were told as parents that there was going to be testing taking place on air quality throughout the year, and yet I have not seen any results for the month of September at all, or heard of any air quality testing going on September, October, November, maybe September, October, November. I was wondering if that is scheduled. On top of that, what is being done about checking the other buildings in the district if this is an environmental issue? And as was said, the schools in the area are dealing with stress from extreme weather. This is not going to be a North Park-only problem. So that's my first set of questions. My other question is, what is being done to assist the bus drivers with some of the very inappropriate and at times violent behavior that is taking place on some of these buses? These drivers cannot be expected to monitor all of these students and pull over every single time there's an incident, but there have been a lot of incidents lately. And our kids need to be safe wherever they are in the district.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? At this time, can I have a motion to close public participation?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, motion passes.
I have to go back and look at what we ultimately decided about that, about monthly testing. I need to check into that.
We'll have to check into the monthly testing and get back to you. As for the other buildings, I believe all our teachers have been told to notify their maintenance staff and the janitorial staff, and each and every item that comes up is addressed. So as for that, that is what is going on. As for assisting the bus drivers, I think that is something we'll have to look into. We do know of an incident that happened recently, but it's something I think we'll have to look more into. We'll have to come back on that. Is there any other discussion? Or anybody else? To board, board discussion. Is there any subcommittee reports?
Building inspection. She was asking for air quality.
That's it. That's not point.
We talked about it, wasn't we?
I forgot to talk about this.
Oh, you want to, yeah.
I don't remember committing to the monthly air quality.
Unless triggered by something above.
Right.
Okay.
Is this a good time for me to give a very brief recap on the NISBA conference, or do you want me to do that later on in the meeting?
No, this would be a good time.
Okay. I did attend the NISBA conference in New York, and I found it to be really enlightening in many, many ways. I learned a lot of things, which is always good. But I did want to touch briefly on a few items. One, the resolutions that we voted on at the annual meeting. The one that we decided not to support, the resolution did pass, but it did pass with amendments. The wording that it passed was limiting. It wasn't, you know, it was vague before, and it was just, they said to improve, the New York State School Board Association supports all efforts to improve school safety by limiting or reducing unauthorized access to guns in schools. So they clarified that a little bit, and it Oh, the other one that I thought was mentioning is that they passed to allow that our annual meeting could be held later in July, so that it didn't have to happen that week of July 4th or so. So that's something that we'll have to look at when we schedule our organizational, excuse me.
That's just the recommendation.
It's the recommendation, but they're looking into that. So that's something that we should be looking at in July. And then, one that was, that had been postponed, but then was later brought on, was encouraging training for all of our board members, be resolved that all school board members complete at least one required training on cultural competency, inclusive of, but not limited to, the examining and strategizing and all this other stuff. What they did instead of requiring us all to do that, they gave us some guidelines, and NISBA is taking on responsibility to provide optional training for all of the board members instead of mandating it for their board members. So those were just the amendments that were in question, that we, when we went over them before. But one of the most important things I wanted to mention is, one of the sessions that I did go to was about the third-party review for capital projects. New York State Ed was there from that department, and they were talking about how they created the process and how it had seemed to get worse, and that had been the word that we were hearing, that the backup to go for the third-party review was actually almost as long of a lag time for review as it was just to go to State Ed. But they have resolved that, and now that process is really getting spearheaded. So they went over all of these things about the cost of going to the third-party review versus the savings that it could cost by getting those reviews earlier and inside of, like, in a couple of months. And they said enough to me to convince me that we should be looking at that for our capital project. So I would like us to reopen that discussion with our, our plan for the third-party review.
It's good news.
It was really good news. It was really good news.
Any other?
Is this the Hyde Park, North Park Quality and Moisture Management Plan going to be put for public access?
Yes.
Okay. Because I think that, just to follow up a second, on the, you know, the North Park Elementary, the indoor air quality and moisture management plan that has been put in place here is, is pretty comprehensive. So I think that will answer a lot of your questions once it goes online, has been made available.
And for those of you that hadn't attended the meetings we had at North Park Elementary, there are steps that need to be taken as we move along. The district is planning on separating out that piece of the capital improvement plan to handle the ventilation upgrades at North Park Elementary as soon as possible. The problem is, the work has to be done during the summer. The situation in the SED is they must review all plans and approve them before we can go forward to seek bids, award bids, and start the process of initiating the modifications. The concerns we had was, under the current lag time of what goes on in the SED department, there was no way we were going to be able to get any work done without losing an entire summer year. This news that Denise brought back indicates that there may be a possibility, although it requires us to pay for the review by a third party, to get approval by the state, and go out for bids, giving us the potential for getting it done a year earlier. So this is good news if we can follow up on that and get the stuff done on time. So we will be following up on that very closely, because it's important to us to get that situation. Obviously, everything we're doing in there are remedial things with the air purifiers and the humidifiers and stuff like that. But the honest solution to that is to get the entire ventilation system in that building redone to current standards to provide a permanent solution to that problem.
Any other? Okay. So we're going to move on to board goals. So I'm hoping this will finish the board goals. We're looking at the technology. We have three things on here. Received two reports on how new technology has been integrated into instructional practice, one in January, one in June. Received an evaluation of integration of technology in the classrooms, and received a status of the smart bond spending projects. Any discussion on those? All good?
Yep.
So we'll be having, we'll be approving that in the, further on in the agenda. And that is closed for this year.
Okay, disappeared again. Oh, wow. I've tried.
Okay. Can I have a motion for Section 10 Consent Agenda?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.1 Personnel Matters?
Some move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.3 Adoption of Board Goals for 2018-2019? You missed one.
11.2.
11.2. Hey, how could I miss that? I'm on my committee. Okay, I have a motion for 11.2 Special Education Placements.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion?
I've reviewed the packet as presented to us and recommend its adoption as presented.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.3 Adoption of Board Goals for 2018-2019?
Don't move.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.4 Booster Club, the FDR Girls Basketball Booster Club?
Don't move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.5 Consultant Agreement with Richard Hahn ND?
Don't move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Opposed? Wait. Didn't seem like it. Okay, okay. So can I have a motion for 11.6 Consultant Agreement with Teresa Dadi?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion for 11.7 Vendor Agreement Cape?
Some move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 11.8 has been pulled. Okay, at this time, will we open public participation? Can I have a motion?
11.9?
What?
11.9?
What we added.
Oh, 11.9, yes. Sorry, I'm going by my written paper. The overnight field trip for the NISBA Winter Conference, all state banned. Can I have a motion?
Don't move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, now we'll open public participation. Can I have a motion for public participation?
Don't move. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? At this time, if anybody would come and like to address the board, please come to the microphone.
Hi, Jessica Patterson. Just in reference to the first set of public participation questions, the dates of the meetings where those monthly testings were agreed upon were September 13th and September 27th. On September 13th, Brian Colandrea was present, and it was held at District Office. And I think Mr. Sheldon, I don't see him here, but he was going back and forth about what type of a plan going forward. So that was the date that that was mentioned, along with September 27th, when the gentleman from Adaptive Environmental was there as well. And I think part of the other questions was, the plan that was presented tonight for North Park is very extensive, and it's great for ongoing preventative measures. But are those same measures being taken in any other schools? So since we said it was an environmental concern, was facilities operations, or Mr. Colandrea called in to do a visible inspection through all the other schools to see, is there a humidity problem here? Is there ventilation issues here? Is there anything growing here? Is there anything growing here? So that was the question to say, the measures that are being taken at North Park, are any of those being implemented as preventative prior to something happening and then costing more money to then be reactive and saying, okay, now we have to go and rent more dehumidifiers? Not saying that's necessary in every school, but to have a baseline to say, this is where a problem could be. This has been fine. I mean, that's kind of typical, especially with checking the humidity levels throughout the year, throughout the different schools. I don't really see that being as too costly to the district. And then, I guess, maybe having recommendations made from, whether it's Facilities and Operations and/or Mr. Colandrea, if he was called in, that was done at North Park a few years ago, where they went to the classrooms and said, you know, don't use this type of paper in the classroom. It could inhibit mold growth. Don't have so much clutter. We need to clean this space out. Was that done in all the other schools as well, to also take a preventative measure so we're not dealing with this in multiple schools?
Would anybody else like to address the board? If there's a motion, at this time, can I have a motion to close public participation?
Don't move.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, though, we are not going further with any of the other schools. We are training, Elliot will be getting training on the mold assessment. And we have not seen the level of any other building. So we are relying totally on the teachers to call out issues when they see them, and they are all know and aware of this. We will have to look at, back at the dates, but I did think we had something for September's 13th, but I'll have to look back on that.
It was a special meeting.
Yeah, but I think we have reports. I just have to look. So we'll have to get back to you.
Yeah, I just want to say, too, that our Facilities Department constantly measures and checks whether or not, you know, ventilation is proper, humidity levels. We have data loggers that our energy specialists utilize as part of our energy conservation program, is knowing whether or not our ventilation is leaking out anywhere. And we do have data loggers for humidity. But back to the Facilities Department, any areas to make sure that any water penetration into a building is addressed immediately?
Is there any other matters deemed necessary to come to the board? Seeing none, there's no need for a second executive session. Can I have a motion to end?
Some move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Meeting is adjourned.